Okay, welcome everyone. We are going to start the agenda 1.01 with the oath of office. Ms. Marshall, our treasurer and CFO will begin swearing in our re-elected board member, Mrs. Jennifer Altman first.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as board member in the said Westerville City School District in Franklin and Delaware Townies in Ohio to the best of your ability and accordance with the laws now in effect and thereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office until your successor is chosen and qualified?
I do.
If you wanted to invite him.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Marshall will now swear in our newly-elected board member, Mrs. Louise Valentine. Yep.
All right, Mrs. Altman, send me the lead to you. And then the others, I do if you agree. Send me the raise your hand, please. Do you, Louise Valentine, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as board member in the said Westerville City School District in Franklin and Delaware Townies in Ohio to the best of your ability and accordance with the laws now in effect and thereafter to be enacted during the continuance in said office and until your successor is chosen and qualified.
I do.
Jen, you want to get a picture? Okay. Thank you both. We will continue on now with the meeting. Thank you for attending this evening's meeting. You will have the opportunity to follow along the agenda in the front of the room. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, one being Agenda Item 8.1. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 8.1 to 13.9. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 14.1. There are sign-up sheets located on the table in the back of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Valentine?
Here.
Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Agenda Item 4.1, we will now open for nominations from board members for the Office of President of the Board of Education for calendar year 2024. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Kristi Meyer for President of the Board of Education for 2024.
Are there any other nominations from board members? Hearing none. May I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education for 2024?
So moved.
Second. And Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll to close nominations for the Office of President?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Agenda Item 4.3, we will now hold the election to consider Kristi Meyer for the Office of President for the Board of Education for calendar year 2024.
Are you ready to take the vote, Hallie? Okay, so we are doing the vote for Kristi Meyer to be the president for 2024, so the answer is yes or no when I call your name. Okay. Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
And Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Miss Meyer is affirmed.
Yep. And congratulations. I'm going to turn the gavel over and change sheets.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So Agenda Item 4.04, we will now open the nominations from the board members for the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education for calendar year 2024. Are there any nominations?
I would like to nominate Jennifer Altman for Vice President, please.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. Hearing no more nominations, may I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education for 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, could you please call the roll to close nominations for the Office of Vice President?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Agenda Item 4.06, we will now hold the election to elect Ms. Jennifer Altman for Vice President for the Board of Education for calendar year 2024. Ms. Marshall, could you please take the vote?
Again, for Ms. Altman for calendar year 2024, the answer is yes or no. Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Congratulations. Next is district highlights and recognitions, and there are none. And there are no reports, so moving to Section 7.01, approval of the minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting held on Monday, December 11th of 2023. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Did someone second or?
No.
Second.
Oh, I thought somebody did.
Okay. Any discussion, any questions? All right.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And there are no public comments at this time, so moving on to the financials, 9.01, resolution to participate in state and federal-funded programs for calendar year 2024. May I have a motion and a second to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall?
Yes, thank you, President Meyer, members of the board. So this is part of our organizational meeting. We do this every January as part of the organizational meeting, and this just lists our federal and state programs which we intend to participate in. We may have some that are added throughout the year as part of the appropriations resolution because sometimes entitlement grants and other things come up through the state and federal government. So that is what we have on the list for now, and it's just a formality that we introduce that at the organizational meeting every year.
Thank you. So we need questions. Any questions? Nope. Okay.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And 9.02, may I have a motion to approve the resolution to approve requests from treasurer CFO, Ms. Marshall?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall?
Yes, thank you again. Also part of the organizational meeting, there's a whole list here. These allow us to do business throughout the year in between board meetings such as pay vendors, process payroll, execute certain contracts, request tax advances, and amend certificates from the county auditor. It also includes dispensing with the reading of the minutes at each board meeting because the board receives those ahead of time, and invest funds, and request tax abatement information from the State of Ohio. So there's a whole list of items in there.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, seeing none. Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I, 9.03, a resolution to approve Board of Education participation. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall?
So there are three things on this agenda item, and this is for our participation in the Ohio School Board Association's Legal Assistance Fund. It's something that we support throughout the year. And the Westerville Chamber of Commerce, we have a great relationship with our chamber here locally. And then the Ohio School Board's annual membership, which allows us with all of the things that they do throughout the year to support our schools.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Ms. Marshall?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And 9.04, a resolution to appoint a delegate and an alternate, alternate delegate to the 2024 Annual Ohio School Boards Association Business Meeting. May I have a motion?
You need to pick the?
Person.
The person. The people.
Well, Louise, guess what? Always get the delegate. It's really fun.
It's very fascinating.
So I would like to nominate Louise.
Alternate?
Alternate.
I'm happy to do it, actually enjoy the meeting. Yeah.
Thank you.
Look at that.
The motion is for Louise to be the alternate and?
For her to be the, or the delegate and Jen to be the alternate.
Do you like me to say it formally? Sure.
I'd like to make a motion for Louise to be the delegate and Jen to be the alternate delegate for the Annual Ohio School Boards Association Business Meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any?
Any discussion?
Yeah, any discussion about that?
Oh, okay.
Plenty of time. Tomorrow. Okay.
You ready? Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. Thank you. In 9.05, amend the fiscal year 2024 annual appropriations. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Marshall?
Thank you again. I have a whole list here. Again, I'm very busy on this agenda tonight. So we have some updates to the annual appropriations resolution. We filed permanents in November, and so this is updating those with grant carryovers. We also had some additional budget requests, some updates from the five-year forecast that were changed. And then we do have some additional projects that we're allocating funds for, for our capital improvement fund, and we have some interest earnings that's come in that we're allocating those funds for some of our building projects. The one thing I do want to just kind of call out is we have had an unusually high claims year with our health insurance, self-insurance fund, and so we are asking for an increase in the appropriations for that. And yeah, so that's all the changes.
Any questions, comments? Okay. Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And 9.06, a resolution to approve the purchases in accordance with a higher revised code 5705.41 and Board Policy 6320. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I wish I could say this was just part of the organizational meeting, but this is an annual, this is a regular thing that we have. So these are what we call the now purchase orders. This is where we have a purchase order that was opened after an invoice date or an order date on a good or service. And we have four on this agenda. Anything over $3,000 requires that we have the board's approval in order for us to pay them. We did have everything budgeted for, it was just the timing of the purchase order. So we have four. We have one from, for Apex Leadership Company of Central Ohio. This was an error with a fundraiser and how we were actually going to collect donations. We ended up setting up the Square account for it, so they had the purchase order open late for that. And then WELTIE Education, and that was just, they had inadvertently left it off of a list that they had for Schedule S pays for training. And then Delaware City Schools, that had to do with a homeless situation that we had that the team had worked out to pay through for federal funds, so. And then place services as a replacement PO. So all of the funds were budgeted for, so I would ask the board to consider approving these.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none. Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And can we take personnel consent agenda all as one? Great. I need a motion to do that, right? Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Can I get a motion for the whole personnel consent taken as one?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
I'll get it. I promise.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper?
Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, members of the board, Ms. Marshall, and Dr. Clark. This evening's personnel consent agenda includes action items with regard to resignations, retirements, leaves of absence, contract status changes, one-time pays, and other employment-related decisions. We have one staff member on this evening's agenda for retirement. Cherie Richards will be retiring at the end of this month with 13 and a half years of service to our district. You might know her to be the face here of this building as you come in on the first floor. We appreciate Cherie's dedication to our students and staff and wish her the best in her years of retirement. Also, I am excited to introduce to you and welcome Elaine Adams. Elaine is on this evening's agenda for your approval as a food service coordinator. So welcome, Elaine. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions, comments?
Not a question, just a comment. Cherie has 13 and a half years of employment with us, but she has served the district for far longer. Cherie and I used to be PTA moms together a long, long time ago, and she has been a devoted supporter of this district and our educational programs and our children and this community as well. So she will be missed, but I'm not going to let her totally say goodbye.
And welcome, welcome to Elaine. Thanks for joining us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Is it okay if we take old business all as one? Okay, great. So may I have a motion for 11.01 through 11.09?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
No.
No.
These are, these are the policies that were reviewed last month?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Great. Okay. Yep. Ms. Marshall?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And there's no new business at this time, so 13.01, overnight and out-of-state field trips. Ms. Baldwin? Oh, sorry.
Okay. It's okay. It really is.
I know. I did this last time, too. May I have a motion to approve the overnight and out-of-state field trips?
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Baldwin, welcome.
Good evening, President Meyer, members of the board, Dr. Clark, and Ms. Marshall. I have two obvious field trips for you to consider this evening, both during spring break. One is the Westerville Works. I think it's our softball team traveling to South Carolina, and then our Westerville South baseball team traveling to Florida, warmer weather, to have some games and practice.
Any questions, comments? No? All right. Ms. Marshall? Yep.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
13.02, a resolution to establish the 2024 Board of Education meeting calendar. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And then Ms. Marshall?
Yeah. So also part of the organizational meeting, this is the annual district calendar. It will be posted on the website and on board docs. Just a note, generally, we do have our board meetings scheduled for the second and fourth meetings of the month, other than March and December, and I think May, due to timing, we did shift those a little bit. So just pay attention to those if you're looking at the calendar. And then we do have a work session scheduled for the 20th, and then the 25th is a joint meeting with the city, and it's not a regular meeting that we have, so.
And it's the Board of Education meeting calendar, not district calendar, right?
Right. Yeah. Right. Yeah, thank you.
Great. Any comments, questions? Okay.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
13.03, appoint the board designee as public records official. May I have a motion to appoint Ms. Marshall as the board designee as the public records official?
So moved. Second.
Yes.
Congratulations.
I'm happy to do it. For those that don't know, every board member at the beginning of their term is required to go through, or their designee is required to go through, public records training. I will go through the training for you, and I will be sure to bring back all of the information so that you have available to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
13.04, may I have a motion to approve the resolution to appoint legal counsel for the Board of Education?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments? Ms. Marshall, sorry.
I'll just make a note that we have the same legal counsel that we've had in previous years. Bricker and Epler is now Bricker Grayden, so that is a change on the agenda, and they are our general counsel, and then we also work with Rich and Gillis Law Group for most things related to property values, board revisions, that sort of thing.
Any questions or comments? All right. Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
13.05, a resolution authorizing the board to acknowledge the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission's design phase review comments for Emerson. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And welcome, Ms. Dennis.
Hi. Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, members of the board, Dr. Clark and Mrs. Marshall. Before you tonight are three separate resolutions, 13.05, 13.06, and 13.07. Each follow the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Design Phase Review and states that the school board agrees to make the required revisions, if any, and acknowledges the design comments as shown in the design phase review. As it pertains to 13.05, Emerson Elementary School, there are no required revisions, thus it's recommended that the board approve the resolution.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Ms. Marshall? Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Is it okay if I take 13.06 and 13.07 together then? Okay. May I have a motion for 13.06 and 13.07, which is a resolution authorizing the board to acknowledge the Ohio Facilities Construction Commissioner's design, Commission's design phase review comments for Hamby and for Westerville South?
So moved.
Second.
Hi, hello again. As it pertains to Hamby Elementary School and Westerville South High School Phase 5, Phase 6, and the HVAC curtain wall, partial renovations, there are no required revisions on either, so thus it's recommended the board approve both resolutions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments? Great, Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Is it okay if we take 13.08 and 13.09 together, too? May I have a motion for 13.08 and 13.09, the approval of expulsion appeal?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Public comments, and we have two tonight, um, just a reminder that you have five minutes to address the board in the public comments section of the agenda, please remember to address the, oh, we already said this, okay. Um, I'm gonna call up, uh, is it A.J. Bell, I'm sorry. Okay. Welcome, Mr. Bell. And just a reminder, I think I said this already, you have five minutes, um, so we look forward to hearing from you.
Um, forgive the formalities, because I don't know all of you, but anyway, it, um, come to my attention of working a lot, too, as an industrial, uh, troubleshooter and problem solver, that I, uh, looking back, helping my grandfather working in his shop on his inventions, I asked, "What were we doing, Grandpa?" "Looking for a better way," he replied. Now I came to realize that persons who have served an average healthy child has demonstrated that their body holds a genetic blueprint for total restoration from sickness and injury. We need to inspire the next generation to search for a better way. Now, I don't mean any of this in any nefarious way or cell destruction or anything like that, but there is a better way, and I had some supporting documents which I didn't bring with me, but, uh, any questions?
Oh. Um, we don't actually?
Okay.
I'm sorry, what we, what we do is we listen and we take back what you, um, present to us, and, and then we work with our staff to?
Okay.
To insert, so if you want to leave what you wrote with somebody?
Mr. Dorn?
Well, okay.
Mr. Dorn?
Thank you.
Mr. Dorn in the back could take it, thank you very much, Mr. Bell. Um, and I actually cannot read. Oh, it's the same person, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so fifteen point zero one, board comments?
Who would like to? I'll go first. Congratulations to Jen and Louise, we're super excited to have you here. Um, I just would like to acknowledge one more time, I think this is the first time in the history of Westerville Board of Education to have an all-female board. I personally think it's a big deal, so I'm excited to serve for these next couple of years with you ladies. And Happy New Year Day, everyone, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for me.
And I wanna, I wanna just pop in and, um, thank former President Davidson, and former Vice President, now President, uh, Kristi Meyer for, um, being our leadership last year, and congratulations to Louise, I'm really looking forward to, um, moving forward this year and our work session and getting our feet under us as a, a new board, so, thank you all.
I just wanted to say that I'm excited to be a part of this board and to get in there and start doing the work, and I thank all of the voters who voted me in, and I hope to make them proud and serve the students and teachers and parents of the district well, so, thank you.
Well, I come at the end, basically, Kristi gets his talk, but, uh, I'm glad you're here, welcome, it's delightful, Jen, always glad you're here. I always enjoy our conversations, and I'm sure I'll enjoy our conversations too, it's gonna be great. It always seems odd because we start our year off fresh in January, when the schools start, it's year off fresh in August. I don't know if we're, what, six months behind or six months ahead, probably behind, um, but it is always, um, a bright spot for me in an otherwise rather dreary month when we kick off the board's new year in January, so Happy New Board Year, I know you guys are all celebrating, yeah.
Great, thank you. I too would like to jump in and congratulate Jen and Louise, I'm really excited, um, to be working with you again, Jen, and to dig in with you, Louise, and Tracy, thank you for your leadership, um, and mentoring, really appreciate that. And welcome back, everybody, I hope everybody had a really wonderful holiday. I have a legislative update, I promise it's a little shorter this time. Um, just quickly, Governor Mike DeWine, uh, signed Senate Bill ninety-one into law, and this bill was sponsored by Senator Tim Schaefer, he's a Republican from Lancaster. It requires anyone holding local office or working in the district of the local office outside of legal counsel to report any fraud, theft in office, or the misuse or misappropriation of public money. The legislation also requires the auditor of state to be modified right away, or notified right away via the Auditor of State's fraud reporting system, and this will take effect on March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. I find it really an odd piece of legislation, but, um, they did pass it, I think that's kind of implicit, right? Governor DeWine also vetoed House Bill sixty-eight, which was sponsored by Representative Gary Cook, he's a Republican from Vickery. The bill would have prohibited certain procedures to alter in minor child sex and would designate this act as the Ohio Saving Adolescents from Experimentation Act. This bill also included House Bill six, which would enact the Save Women's Sports Act to require schools, state institutions of higher education, and private colleges to designate separate single-sex teams and sports for each sex. A portion of House Bill sixty-eight was just signed into law via an executive order by Governor DeWine, but the Save Women's Sports Act still remains vetoed at this time. In the Senate, um, Senator Christina Roganer, uh, Republican from Hudson, introduced Senate Bill two, um, zero eight, and this bill would require a city exempted village or local stu- school district to include in its open enrollment policy an exception for military children. So that's it. Thank you. Um, and with that, the board will meet in regular session on Monday, January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, at six P M. at the Early Learning Center, nine, oh, do I have to? Okay, it's here, but nine thirty-six East Wind Drive. Do I need to?
Have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall? Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.